Okay. It is now four minutes after seven o'clock, and I'd like to call and order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Beloit City Council. It is Tuesday, January 21st, 2014. We're at 100 State Street, Beloit, Wisconsin. Roll call.
Roll call shows all councilors present except for Councillor Levy.
All right. Second item is a pledge of allegiance. Will you please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three would be special orders of the day announcements. We have none, but we'll move on to item four, public hearings. Item four A.
A proposed zoning text amendment to repeal and recreate Sections 9.1.1 and 9.1.2 and to amend Sections 9.1.4, 9.2.1 sub-A, and 9.2.2 sub-E of the zoning ordinance, Chapter 19 of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Beloit relating to nonconforming uses and structures. The Plan Commission recommended approval, six to zero.
Mrs. Christensen.
This ordinance is a direct result of recent changes to Wisconsin statutes relating to nonconforming uses and structures. Sections one through four of the attached ordinance will bring the zoning ordinance into compliance with revised state statute provisions. Section five of the attached ordinance includes the most substantial change based upon 2001 Wisconsin Act 170. This change deals with legal nonconforming structures or grandfather structures, which are existing structures that do not comply with development standards. Prior to this act, the zoning ordinance limited the cost of repairs to damage nonconforming structure to 50 percent of its value, or 80 percent if it's in a historic district or it's a historic structure. Then they could not be restricted on the same footprint. The new state law prohibits us from imposing those kind of limits, and so that's essentially what this ordinance does. It does still allow us to continue the legal nonconforming use section, so if something's destroyed by more than 50 percent, we still can, if something's in a single-family district, we still can, we still have the ability to stop it from being reconstructed as a multi-unit. So that does remain. It's just that the structure can be built in the current footprint it's in. And Plan Commission did review this and recommended approval, and we did not have any comments from citizens at all on this item.
Thank you. I'd like to open the public hearing on item four A. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak on item four A, please approach the podium and state your name and address. Second call for persons to come forward and speak on item four A. Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak on item four A. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on item four A. Do we have a motion to suspend the rules?
Move to suspend the rules.
Move by Spritzer.
Second.
Second by Lukey. Do we have any questions or comments on suspending the rules? Hearing none. All in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We've suspended the rules by a vote of six to zero. Do we have a motion on merits?
Move approval on merits.
Move by Spritzer.
Second.
Second by Kincaid. Do we have any questions or comments on the underlying matter? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes, six to zero. Item four B.
A proposed zoning text amendment to create Section 5-102 sub-A, sub-15, and to amend Section 5-103 of the zoning ordinance, Chapter 19 of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Beloit relating to public lands and institutions, district uses, and standards. The Plan Commission recommended approval, six to zero.
Mrs. Christensen.
What we've seen in the last several years is a trend of churches leaving their current church buildings, buying other buildings, leaving those vacant buildings, and people come to us asking for, you know, what they could reuse the building for. The current PLI zoning ordinance does not deal well with community service uses or daycare uses, and the most recent example we had was there's a house that's on the first congregational church lot that they would like to be able to divide off to use as a daycare. We've had some daycares close in the area of the college, and they really need to have a space to have a daycare. So that's kind of what brought this, so where we really took an active step to draft an ordinance amendment. So this ordinance amendment would allow the community service and daycare-type uses in PLI districts. And then when we started looking at this, the minimum standards were 100 feet wide, the lot was, and one acre. And when you're creating new lots, that's actually pretty sizable. That would be for a pretty large public use. So what we thought made some sense was to allow the development standard of the most restrictive adjacent district. So if you're next to the residential district, you'd use a residential standard. If you're next to the commercial, you would use the commercial standard. And we believe, as staff and Plan Commission did recommend approval, that this would work better for the city. And the Plan Commission did hold a public hearing on January 8th and voted unanimously six to zero to recommend approval of this text amendment.
Thank you. I'd like to open the public hearing on item four B. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak on item four B, please state your name and address and approach the podium. Second call for persons to come forward and speak on item four B. Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak on item four B. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on item four B. Do we have a motion to suspend the rules?
Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Move by Banda Bogart, second by Lukey. Do we have any questions on suspending the rules? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor of suspending the rules, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We've suspended the rules by a vote of six to zero. Do we have a motion on the underlying matter?
Second.
Move by DeForest, second by Spritzer. Any questions or comments on the underlying matter? Hearing none, I'll call it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes, six to zero. Item four C.
A proposed ordinance amending the zoning district map of the City of Beloit to change the zoning district classification of the properties located at 1203, 1233, 1249, 1253, and 1257 Sixth Street from R2, two-family residential district, to PLI, public lands and institutions district. And the properties located at 1313, 1317, 1323, 1327, 1333, 1339, 1343, 1349, and 1353 Sixth Street, and 219 and 225 North Street from R1B, single-family residential district, to PLI, public lands and institutions district, for the school district of Beloit. The Plan Commission recommended approval, six to zero.
Madam Director.
The school district has gradually purchased all the properties that Rebecca just listed with the intention to expand the Beloit Memorial High School campus, with the intention being where it's adjacent to sports facilities, they would be expanding the sports facilities where it's adjacent to where there's parking. They would most likely be expanding parking. There's no immediate plans, according to the school district who came to the last meeting, there's no immediate plans to do that project, but they would like to move forward with the step of rezoning it so that when they're ready to move forward, everything is as it should be. We already did approve the amendment to the future land use plan, so this zoning would be consistent with the comprehensive plan. Plan Commission did review this item and voted unanimously six to zero to recommend approval of this zoning map amendment.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing on item four C. Anyone wishing to speak on item four C, please approach the podium and state your name and Second call for persons to come forward and speak on item four C. Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak on item four C. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on item four C. Do we have a motion to suspend the rules?
Move to suspend the rules.
Move by Spritzer, second by DeForest. Any questions or comments on suspending the rules? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Any? We've suspended the rules by a vote of six to zero. And do we have a motion on the underlying matter?
Move.
Second.
Move by Kincaid, second by Spritzer. Any questions or comments on the underlying matter? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes, six to zero. On to item four D.
A resolution authorizing a conditional use permit to allow vehicle repair in the C3 Community Commercial District for the property located at 1029 Fourth Street. The Plan Commission recommended approval, six to zero.
Mrs. Christensen.
This property is, includes a 787 square foot building, which includes one overhead door which faces Fourth Street. The property is currently vacant. The lot itself is pretty narrow. It's about 35 feet wide. We did send this out to the review agents. The fire department did note that proper disposal and handling of waste oil and flammable liquids is necessary for this use, and engineering is requiring space to turn around on the site, and that backing out onto Fourth Street is not acceptable. And they are also requiring the driveway to be on the subject property, as it is currently on the lot to the north, 1035 Fourth Street, and the lot is also owned by the same person. No other comments or concerns were submitted. Planning staff did note that four off-street parking stalls are required per service fee, and so there's a condition of approval related to the parking requirements, as well as striping the parking stalls. We are also recommending that a landscape strip that they comply as much as possible with the landscape ordinance, which would involve the normal landscape strip on Fourth Street, as well as green space on either side of the property. In order to fit everything, we essentially felt that that north property line needs to be moved at least 20 feet in order to make that happen. At the Plan Commission meeting, there was a request made that they draft a second site plan because the site plan that's included in the packet, if you look at it, it does have a line going down and then over, which the property line doesn't do. And so they did submit one, which was handed out to you this evening, which does show the four parking stalls and some landscaping. When this did go to Plan Commission at their last meeting, they did modify the conditions which were recommended by staff. So at this point, the conditions included in the resolution, which are for your consideration tonight, include the following, which is that the conditional use permit authorizes the vehicle put repair within the existing building, but that vehicle repair may not occur outside of the building. Junk vehicles, as defined in Chapter 7, shall not be stored outside. That vehicles may not be sold on-site unless the applicant obtains an auto dealer's license from the state. A plot of survey shall be submitted to planning staff for review to move the northern property line to the north to incorporate the existing curb cut onto the subject property. The new lot line shall be 10 feet south of the house on the adjacent property. This must be recorded with the Rock County Register of Deeds by March 1st, 2014. The applicant shall remove the adjacent fence and expand the asphalt to accommodate at least four parking stalls by June 1st. This will require site plan review to be completed. Following this expansion, the applicant shall stripe the lot in accordance with Section 8-113 of the zoning ordinance by June 1st. The applicant shall follow landscaping and green space requirements in accordance with Section 34.21 of the Architecture Review and Landscape Code, and then just our standard about major changes coming back through this process, and then an additional condition required by Plan Commission. Upon completion of the lot expansion, the applicant shall install a fence on the north, south, and east property lines. This fence material shall not be chain-linked or chain-linked with slats. And there was considerable discussion on fencing, and with the thought being that because there's some residential on two of the sides, that it was important to screen this use from those residential uses, and that's why the fence was necessary, and they just did not feel like chain-linked or chain-linked with slats would be an attractive fence material. And in terms of the new lot line where it was, they just felt that they wanted to try to get as much space as possible, because even with adding that width, this lot is still technically nonconforming with regard to the C3 zoning. I mean, it is a really small lot, and, you know, it's kind of the way things developed years and years and years, you know, decades ago. They don't comply with modern standards, so they wanted to, as much as possible, give this commercial use the space it needed. But they did recommend approval, subject to those nine conditions.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing on item four D. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak on item four D, please approach the podium and state your name and address.
Dave Kleisner, 958 Milwaukee Road. I've been a resident of, or working on Fourth Street for 35 years. It's the old Milton business area there that we have acquired, and we agree with everything that they say, but we don't think that we need a fence around the whole structure or the property lines. We already have a fence to the south of us. To put a fence on top of that one, just doesn't seem a fence on top of another fence. We have, from the property owner to the south of us, we have a written disagreement with putting a fence on top of his fence. Otherwise, we agree with everything that they say. We just would like to reconsider the fence proposals and the strips of landscaping on Fourth Street. It is narrow. We think that we could make up nice landscaping on the south side of the property. That's about all we have for that. We'd like to reconsider that. We can move the property lines. We'd like to do that.
Any other persons wishing to come forward and speak on item four D? Second call for persons to come forward and speak on item four D. Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak on item four D. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on item four D. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Move by Spritzer, second by Lukey. Questions or comments? Councillor DeForest.
I guess, first of all, one of the original questions that I had was, I noticed the fire department's concern about proper disposal and handling of waste oil and flammable liquids. Is that something, Ms. Christensen, that the fire department can request to see a plan for how they will handle and dispose of flammable liquids so we can check compliance?
I don't know what the fire department does. I mean, I know that they do commercial fire inspections on all commercial properties, but I just don't know.
So it will be covered.
I just don't know what they, I mean, they'll go out and inspect it and make sure that they're doing that.
Okay.
But I don't know, like, what their process is for dealing with that.
Right, and that was my mistake for not emailing chief about that, so. And then I do want to address and ask some more, Mr. President, could I ask Mr. Kleisner about some of his comments about the fencing? Would that be appropriate?
Sure, that would be fine. I'll permit that.
Thank you. Thank you. So I see what you mean. There's currently fencing on one side of the property. Could you, could you share with me more of your concerns about fencing the remainder of the other sides of the property? Is it the cost that you're concerned about?
I just don't understand why we have to be bordered with fences. I don't, you know, it's nice to be able to see around everything and to be fenced in. I see CVS is our good neighbor. They don't have fences. Everybody gets to see all the way through. Put our fence up there would be just confining. We own all the property there. We take good care of our property, so we will make sure of good neighbors.
And then can I ask about your concern about the landscape strip on Fifth Street?
It's just plowing, and we have plenty of strips and cosmetic compliant things on the south side of the, or north side of the strip. We have the whole side of it there that we can shrub and tree. And we're talking about a business that's been there for 20 some odd years, and it's only a little two-car thing. We agree with moving the property line. That's what everybody would propose to do, but, you know, how, the fences and just seems to be quite busy.
Okay. Thank you for answering my questions.
Sure.
Okay. Councillor Kincaid.
Is the, is the existing fence on your property, or is it on the adjacent property?
It's right on the, right on the border of both properties.
But you've had it surveyed and you?
Well, I haven't had it surveyed personally, but it's clearly, there's only one, there's about three inches from the building where the fence is. So if we had to put a fence on top of his, we'd have to. And then the, the planning commission told us the reason why they needed a fence on top of his fence is Casey wanted to move his fence, our neighbor. Well, we got to sign things saying, witness that he would give us notice. If he moved his fence or took away his fence, we'd have the opportunity to replace his So he's, he's not in agreement of having our fence put on top of his fence. One fence.
So that agreement preceded any discussion of this fence?
I just finally got the wind of this proposal, and I would like to get the opportunity to talk to everybody on the planning commission of what our thoughts and views were. I just got to the tail end of this. I would've spent more time with the planning commission on it. I would love to have the opportunity, but I didn't think it was going to be that much of a, because Mr. Brown's been there for 20 some years, and he ran a little detail shop there. It's only a little two-car. We're not talking about a big production retail or repair facility. Just a small little, and I can assure you that we'll take, we'd like to have, if you wanted to, we can just watch it for a while and see how things go. And if anybody disapproves with it, then we can back up and re-change it. We'd be glad to have that opportunity. But we've been on Fourth Street for 35 years, and we love the area, and we can do whatever we can to make it look as fine as, be proud of it. People can be proud of us. We really don't feel we need to move the property line, but we will do it if everybody sees the fit. We've got 35 feet there. We've got plenty of room to turn around, and there's other businesses on Fourth Street that have less parking and more congested, but if that's what the planning commission sees fit to do, we would be glad to do it.
That was, that was for the turning radius of an automobile or a truck, or is it, what were we trying to accomplish? Extending a lot 35 feet? A fire truck?
The reason we were requiring it is so that you could actually turn a vehicle around and not back onto Fourth Street, because that's a state highway.
Yeah, I understand.
I mean, that's what our intention was, why we were recommending it, is staff is to fit four parking stalls, which are required by code, and then to actually, if four cars are parked there, to back a car out and turn around and not be on Fourth Street. Engineering did not feel that there was enough space on-site.
No.
Which is why the requirement was put in place. And I recognize that there's a lot of nonconforming structures and uses there, but when we get a conditional use for a new use, that's when you evaluate this and try to do what's best, you know, for that area, and we felt just, you know, jamming it in there again was not the best thing. I mean, that's where staff was coming from.
And to shed some more light on that situation, a vehicle's 16 feet long, and we have 33 feet line there, so it should be enough to maneuver. The businesses prior to us had, state of data, and had problems moving vehicles around, and we're not going to have a, it's not a big area, so as far as the building inside, it's not that big of an area to house that many cars, so we don't need a lot of parking. And there is plenty of square footage of lot there. It's all paved. And so if you had 16 feet of a vehicle, and you have another 16 feet for it to back up, it's 33 feet, and that's what we got. We got, well, we have a foot left over.
Okay. Does that, any more questions, Councillor Kincaid? Councillor Lukey.
I've got a question, Ms. Christensen, for you, besides Mr. Kleisner. Was the main reason for the fence, a new fence for uniformity? Or why would you want to put a fence on, next to a fence? It just, to me, it doesn't seem to make, make a lot of sense.
The applicant who came to the meeting didn't know who owned the fence, so, I mean, we didn't even discuss ownership of the fence. So I think the thought of Plan Commission was that they thought that fence belonged to the property, and so they felt it should be taken down and a nicer fence be put up than what was there.
Okay, so there wouldn't be two fences then?
No, there wouldn't be two fences, from what I think, I mean, Chuck was there too. So, I mean, if Chuck's, that was Chuck's impression. My impression was that the Plan Commission thought that fence would come down, that Dave owned the fence, and that he would, they would take it down, put up a new fence, and that it was really important to screen, you know, it wasn't going to be in the front, to just screen the adjacent uses, especially the two residential uses from this use. I mean, that that was part of the purpose of it.
We're sure that fence belongs to Mr. Kleisner.
Well, no, he's saying it doesn't, so I don't know that I.
There's an old gas station right next to it.
Yeah. Well, I'm just telling you what Plan Commission's impressions were. I'm not saying that it belongs to Mr. Kleisner.
So we're, we'd be approving something and telling him to do, we'd be, we'd have two fences and side by side, because we don't know who owns that fence.
I understand that.
Yeah. I'm just, I'm just trying to get clarification.
Yeah, I'm just telling you what Plan Commission was, what their thinking was, so, because they added that condition.
If anything, I'd like to put forth an amendment that if the fence is taken down in the future, then maybe a new one, per Planning Commission recommendations be put up, but that we maybe just leave it as is, because we don't know.
Still not a fence on the north side, so you still don't have a fence, and I don't think the Plan Commission would have agreed with putting up a chain link with slats on that side. And they wanted to have that screened. So, I mean, there's still the issue of, that's the south property line. There's also a north property line.
I'd like to maybe, I'd like to make an amendment that until this issue is resolved as to who owns that fence, that we hold off, and once it's determined, then we can ask Mr., we can tell Mr. Kleisner that this is what you need to do. But we'd be stupid and foolish to have, you know, go ahead right now and have him take down a fence that may not be his.
Yeah, I understand that, but what about the north property line, is what I'm asking you about, too.
That brings up a good question, too. I don't understand why we have to dominate people, or tell people we have to put fences up on the property line. What's the purpose?
Well, the Plan Commission is, you know, looking at code and looking at the best use of the property. I don't know what their thinking and reasoning was. I'm sure they had a good reason for it, but.
And the fences that are in question are in excellent shape, and everybody takes good care of everything that's down there. Everything's a good work in order.
I would imagine a lot of it, Mr. Kleisner, is for the safety and security of your property and for the protection of your asset, your investment there. But I, otherwise, I wouldn't know. But I'd like to hold off on this as far as having that be one of the conditions for the fact that we don't know who owns that fence.
You have to be aware that you can't add a condition later.
Could we clarify what the motion that's been made is?
Sure. And well, we don't, we cannot take a motion at this point. We're still in the middle of the public hearing. That's something that would happen, we'd have to do afterwards.
You actually closed the public hearing already?
Oh, that's right. That's right.
So we have, Councillor Spritzer made a motion to adopt the resolution, and Councillor Lukey seconded.
You're wanting to remove the fence, the fence condition? Or do you wish to replace it?
I'd like to remove it until it's determined who owns it, and then set conditions after that. Once the, once ownership is determined, we go forth from there.
Okay, you are, you are aware that we cannot add a new, a new condition after we approve it tonight?
I understand.
So you're just simply wanting to remove it?
I, I'd like to second that motion, and if I could comment on that, irregardless, from what I understand, the reason for the rationale for wanting the fencing.
Hold on.
Sorry.
Am I not on?
Well, technically.
The rationale for not wanting the, for wanting the fencing was to screen residential properties, and from what I can tell, the only residential property that would need to be, that would be screened by the fencing, there's a garage there and a driveway. It's not a budding, a house. It looks like the, the property is directly up against a garage or shed of the property behind it, and I'm not really seeing any other residential property that would need to be screened from this, and.
One else owned by Mr. Kleisner?
1035 is a residential.
That's a residential.
Yes, that is a house.
And is the Peach Line the, the new boundary, the new lot line? Well, I, I am feeling like the fencing requirement is unnecessary. There's no vehicle repair going on outside the business, and it seems like a small-scale business. I would feel comfortable with eliminating the fencing requirement. I would feel comfortable with eliminating the fencing requirement.
All right. Councilor Spritzer, did you want to weigh in on this?
Sure. I guess. If we're going to adjust the fencing requirement, I would be more inclined to put something in place that at least on the south side would require that something go up if this fence were to come down. But I guess I'm, I'm wondering, and maybe Ms. Christensen, you can explain the process here. The, the owner had mentioned wishing that there was more time or more opportunity to hash this out with planning commission. Obviously, planning commission was not aware of what we now believe is the ownership situation of the fence. If we were to delay a decision tonight, do we have the opportunity to send this back for further review of planning commission in light of the new information that we have?
You can send it back, it won't go back till February. I mean, it's your prerogative, you can send it back to them.
But it, it would, it wouldn't go to planning commission until February or, so it wouldn't come to us at our next meeting, it would wait a month?
Yeah, the, well, planning commission was canceled for tomorrow. But even if it wasn't, the agenda would already be out. So it would never have gone, because it would be the next day. It was, so it would go on the February, I want, I'm fifth, I think. And then it would come back to you at the second meeting in February. As early as.
Thank you. Question for the owner. Would, what is the timeline on needing approval of this?
Well, time's essence when it comes to business people. But I totally agree with everybody's thinking, if, it is a small operation and, and we own all the property there and we will monitor and police any problems we have with it. If we could just have the opportunity to do our own fencing or what we see fit on our own. The fences just seem to be such a. Well, we're trying to, trying to be a friendly environment there, just putting up fences all over the place. I just thought, I, I would like to pass on the fences if it's possible. And I will make it up on landscaping and, and keep the property spiffy and, and if there are any problems with it, you guys can.
Thank you.
Yes. Go ahead, I've got your, your, your life.
I was, I was at the planning commission. Because I'm a city councilor, I couldn't vote or make motions. But I got the sense from the deliberations of the commission that they, they wanted to approve this. But there were some, as we all understand, there's a lack of information. Who owns the fence? Who, who takes care of it? And if it's to be removed, who does it? They were, as we know, and I think we all agree, they were quite insistent on the landscaping. And what was, I think, informing them was that there are two or three homes that border the property. That maybe in the past, we've missed some opportunities to do the best we can for the neighborhood, which includes residential. And to, to the best we can to add value to the neighborhood by what, what's happening to the property. Yeah, I think we all know that we haven't done as well as we should. This, I think, or not should, I should, but rather could. I think this is, is one where we, we could work hard with the planning commission and see what they can come up with. I'd like to see them have a chance to look at this with a fuller knowledge of, of what the facts are. They, I think they did the best they could given what they had. You're, you're, the person who represented you was the buyer of the property, is that who that was?
It's the, it'll be the key holder of the property. We are the owner of the, of this three parcels.
Yeah, I understand that.
And we, we just acquired it now. The property is in, all the fences are in good shape, the property is actually in good shape. We, we inherited it the way it is and we will improve on it. But changing it all around, I just don't see the, how it's going to business, make the business any stronger or the area any better. We have a good, everything's in good work, any word or no?
If we could send it back to the commission, I would certainly support that.
So you, we have a motion for a layover then?
Adam, parliamentarian.
Well, right now you have a motion to, on the table right now, you have a motion to amend the resolution by removing the condition that has to do with fencing and a second.
Okay, so I think we need to resolve that one first before we do, decide to make any other action. We do also have a couple of, of additional persons wishing to make comments, so I'll go ahead and finish through with that. And then just, just finish these two comments up and then let's go ahead and address the amendment. Councilor DeForest?
I, I'd just like to make the statement, I would rather see landscaping as proposed than a fence here. I think that would beautify this corridor much better than a property covered in fences. So I guess I just wanted to make that statement, I prefer the landscaping, thank you.
Okay, Councilor Lukey?
I was going to make the same statement. When Mr. Glashner just said five minutes ago he'd enhance the landscaping, that really impressed me. Driving down Fourth Street, seeing that is one thing. But the other factor is Mr. Glashner already owns a very nice building on Fourth Street and he's enhanced it and made this, that area as well as other business owners look very well. So his reputation and the fact that he would do the landscaping is enough for me to disregard the fence. Thank you.
Okay, all right then. I think, let's go ahead and call the question on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment to remove the fencing requirement from conditional use, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right, the amendment passes by an item of vote of five to one. Do we have any other motions or amendments or any other comments? All right then, let's go ahead and, and, and call the, the underlying matter. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Item passes, oh no, okay, so item passes five to one. All right, is that clear as mud?
Yes, I think we got it.
Okay, thank you. Nice spirited discussion, get our, our blood moving. All right, item four E.
A resolution allocating 2010 community development block grant funds to eligible projects. The community development authority recommended approval five to zero.
Mrs. Christensen?
There are forty thousand three hundred twelve dollars and ninety-five cents of grant funds in the economic development revolving loan fund. Those are grant dollars. He also has, Andrew also has over two hundred thousand dollars in program income. How those dollars work in HUD land is that all your program income has to be spent before you can touch grant dollars. At this point, because they're twenty ten dollars, they're kind of nudging us to, they have this whole red flag system to get those funds reallocated to eligible projects. When this came up, I notified Andrew, the GBDC really wanted an opportunity to suggest a project for some of that funding. And they suggested DBA's rental assistance program, which I believe they have provided some funding to. And, but recognizing at the time, we were working through a process with four twenty-two Bluff Street. And that because there's two houses on that lot, one under the zoning ordinance can't be there. We wanted to allocate some money to demolish one of the houses. So what we took to CDA was eleven thousand three hundred twelve dollars and ninety-five cents for the demolition and or rehab of the houses on that site. And then Shawna had requested, the executive director of the DBA had requested twenty-nine thousand for a business assistance program, which would provide five hundred dollars a month for a period of up to six months to a new business that locates in the downtown Blount Association's Business Improvement District. And a map of that area was included in your packet. They were going to use this as an incentive to get businesses to move downtown. And then a copy of their application was included in the packet. This, this did go, was reviewed by CDA and CDA did recommend approval of the request for twenty-nine thousand and allocating the remaining to the four twenty-two Bluff Street project. And we did publish a notice in the paper announcing the thirty-day public review. Tonight is the scheduled night to have the public hearing and take action on this budget amendment. And it, their HUD is essentially not giving us a choice on allocating these dollars. And it does still leave a considerable amount of money in the loan fund to allow Andrew to provide incentives to other businesses. So we kind of are able to still do that economic development piece, even without that money.
Okay, thank you. All right then, I'll open the public hearing on item four E. Any persons wishing to come forward and speak on item four E, please approach the podium and state your name and address. Second call for persons to come forward and speak on item four E. Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak on item four E. Hearing done, I'll close the public hearing on item four E. We have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Moved by Lukey?
Second.
Second by Spritzer. Councilor DeForest?
Thank you. Ms. Alamein, would you be willing to answer some questions that I have? Thank you, I appreciate that. I'm glad to hear that the rental assistance program is successful, that's wonderful. I'm, I wanted to ask you if you feel from the, the interest you fielded from businesses who are looking at this program, is five hundred dollars a month enough to, enough of an incentive to really help them, you know, get off the ground? Do you feel like that that's substantive enough or should we increase the amount per month that we're providing?
We originally started this program with a six thousand dollar grant that we got from GBDC and that's what the committee came up with. We kept in mind that some of the rents in downtown Blount are in the lesser range, seven hundred and fifty dollars, thinking that then the person would have to pay the additional two hundred and fifty dollars. And that shows that they are committed to the project as well, knowing that this is only six months of a grant. And then if they were on the higher end of that, obviously, they can afford to pay that rent once that is ended. But it shows our good graces that we are trying to support them. So it was actually twofold depending on the project. Our committee debated about this for several months. And that was the number that we came up with that we thought was a very good number.
Okay, great, thank you, I'm glad to hear there was some healthy discussion about it and, and good rationale for arriving at that decision. The other thing I'm struggling with, this money is intended to benefit individuals who have low to moderate incomes. And I'm having trouble, it feels like a stretch to me, trying to understand how this would benefit individuals with low to moderate income. What type of screening will you be doing in terms of assuring that someone who's looking to start a business downtown and is going to receive this rent assistance program, that they qualify as low or moderate income?
We will follow all the HUD guidelines, the CDPG guidelines that Andrew currently follows, Andrew Yonkey with his program. So I am very familiar with that, having worked with Andrew in the past. So we would follow the exact same guidelines. We would just have them fill out the applications and make sure that they are before they're funded.
Okay.
And this is how special, there's essentially a category in HUD funding, which is called special economic development projects or activities. And they meet the national objective through low and moderate income job creation. So you create jobs, so these are required to be new jobs or new businesses, so they'd have new jobs. And they have to be made available to low and moderate income individuals. And then we would prefer for them to actually be offered to low and moderate income individuals. And so that is actually allowed under HUD guidelines. There's a couple different ways you can meet that standard. But for all the economic development activities, including Andrew's loan program, they have to create jobs for low and moderate income persons. And that does not mean they're paying a low income wage. It means that the people who get these jobs are low and moderate income before they get the job. With the goal being, as part of these programs, to create jobs. And that's what this may, these won't create a ton of jobs, but they're small dollars. So it's, the standard is one per twenty thousand dollars. So, you know, they wouldn't have to create many jobs. But the intention with these programs and HUD encourages you to use the economic development, the economic development programs HUD currently, HUD Milwaukee office currently likes you to do are smaller businesses. Because they, they feel that gives you the biggest bang for the buck. Because, you know, you're creating, you know, you've got entrepreneurs downtown and then you're also creating, you know, some job opportunities downtown.
Okay.
So that is within the range of what HUD sees economic development dollars being used for.
Okay, good, I just wanted to make sure we were following the spirit of the intent of the funding and not just stretching it to meet our needs. Because I'm excited about it, I think it's wonderful, but I wanted to make sure I did my due diligence, thank you for that.
No problem.
Councilor Spritzer?
I have a couple of questions to follow up on that for whichever one of you wants to answer it. So for the one job to twenty thousand dollar ratio, if we're breaking it up like this where an individual applicant would, I believe, be getting at most three thousand dollars, is each individual applicant required to create one job if they get the money or how does that work?
It's prorated, the system just automatically like calculates what you need. But it's prorated, so then it wouldn't necessarily be a full-time position. But it could be a part-time position. Because we actually track the position by the number of hours worked per week.
Okay, but each applicant would have to create some sort of position? It wouldn't just be aggregate over the program that some applicant would have to do?
No, every applicant would have to do their prorated share of job creation.
And then for Ms. Alamein, you, you're looking at a goal of thirteen businesses, just, can you give us a sense? That, that would be fab, fabulous, that sounds like a great number. Can you give us a sense of where, where you envision them locating or where you envision them coming from? Or, you know, are these going to be entrepreneurs or relocating businesses? That, that seems like a very optimistic goal, which would be fabulous, but just give us a sense of how that works?
Sure, actually, the two applications that we've been able to fund so far, one was a relocation, total pickup and move from Rockford, Illinois. It was just announced in the Blount Daily News yesterday. Rick Wells LTD, which is an advertising marketing firm. And then the other one is WM Day Spa, which is a branch of the location in Rockford. So those are two of the applications that we did fund. The other applications was a total startup business, which actually has already opened. But they applied for the funds in case we did get this. And another one is a total startup, who's a farmer's market vendor, who would like to start up and open their own store, which would be great. As you know, we have a few of those already downtown, so we love that. And then a few other ones were service businesses that have applied. We have a restaurant who applied, that would be a total restart. He closed his business in Elgin a few years ago, I guess, and wants to reopen here, which would be great. We still have about seven or eight other properties that we're waiting on applications for. So we do anticipate using all the money, if you could give us more money, that would even be wonderful too.
Great, well, that's, that's great to hear. And if we're, if it looks like we are in fact going to go through the money, I trust we'll hear from you to see if we can find any more someplace.
Definitely.
Councilor DeForest?
Sorry, yes, I had a quick follow-up question related to that that I asked upstairs. And I, and I asked if the twenty-nine thousand, if you felt that was sufficient to cover. And it sounds like I'm hearing that maybe it's not, so.
Um, so far I think it is. Because we don't have thirteen applications that we're looking to fund. I think, you know, in talking to Mrs. Christensen, if we ever did come to a point, if there was more funds available and we utilized all of ours, I would like to apply for more if, if those funds stay here and not taken back by HUD. So previous to that, if there was extra money in that, we would definitely probably apply for it at a later date.
Okay, great, especially because I know the, it appears that the demolition, the potential demolition is going to be held up while that's being worked out. So I would much rather see the money go towards business startup than the demolition. So I guess I'm just sharing my two cents about that, thank you.
Thanks.
All right then.
And the only reason I would say to leave some money in for demo is that we're going to at least have to demo one house, no matter what. And there is a hundred fifty thousand dollars in the CIP for acquisition and demo. And if we leave that in the CIP, that's fewer houses that we can condemn and demo during the year. So this was the ability to at least tear down one house with the CDPG funds. I mean, if you don't, you don't, but just, I mean, we would then have to pull that out of our CIP acquisition account. So it would then mean we had less for those code enforcement efforts throughout fourteen.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other questions or comments? Hearing done, I think we have a motion second, so we'll call the matter. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Item passes six to zero. Item four F has been withdrawn, so there won't be any, we won't proceed with that matter. Item 4F has been withdrawn, so there won't be any, we won't proceed with that matter. Item five is citizens' participation. We've reached the point on the agenda for persons to come forward and speak to the council on items that may come before us, and we may not act on any of these requests tonight, but may refer the person to staff for assistance. Let me ask you, hold your comments to three minutes or less. We have two sheets for this. I think first one is Mr. Tom Finley.
Good evening. Tom Finley, 1740 East Ridge Road in Beloit. Like to just speak briefly about the item on the agenda for the I-39, I-43 interchange that you're looking at for later tonight. I'd like to really request that you not approve option number two, that you consider very seriously option number one. Option number two, the biggest concern that I have with that is that it moves the entry point coming into Beloit on Highway 43, and then also the exit point going out of Beloit on Highway 43, out to the Hart Road interchange. Now, I know the major advantage of it is, is we can punch a road over the interstate, get access to the gateway at a parallel to the current I-43 right now, but I honestly feel that the detriment to the businesses, mine being one of them, that's on the Milwaukee Road corridor from the casual traffic, would be more significant than the benefit that you would receive as a result of having the gateway boulevard, or access to the gateway, I guess, through there. If you think about it, if you're coming in 43, you're going to have to get off Hart Road, and then if you want to come into Beloit, it's about three miles or so, between two and three miles, I don't know exactly. There's going to be seven interchanges. If you're coming from Milwaukee, there's seven interchanges in there, whether they be roundabouts or normal interchanges that you're going to have before you get to where our current first stoplight is at. And then, if you were going on either direction on I-90, if you wanted to get off for casual, whether it be to get a sandwich, get gasoline, maybe even a hotel, you would, in order to get back out onto 43, if that was your destination, in other words, if you're traveling from I-90 to I-43, you would actually have to go all the way back out to Hart Road again then, in order to get back onto 43. And I just think that that would be very detrimental to the casual person coming in and using the services of that area. That's a very big retail area for the city of Beloit. My guess is, it probably produces more tax dollars retail-wise than any other area in the city. And the last thing that you want to do is have a nice road that goes to Gateway, that services the people that work there, and I completely appreciate that, but to the detriment of those businesses. I think it would be a very big mistake. So, I'd like you to reconsider. I know that option number two has been recommended by staff, and I know it's had a significant amount of review, and I, pardon me?
Years of review.
Okay, so that's, that's, I would, I would like to ask that you consider option number one over option number two. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brad Lauper.
Good evening, Brad Lauper, 7-Eleven is Elliot Terrace in Beloit here. I'm just here with Tom. I'm also the president of the I-90 Business Association, which some of you know, and I made some phone calls today, because I knew that this was going to come before the council tonight, and I don't think as an organization, we're ready to have that happen yet. I know I have a meeting set up with Larry at the end of February to have him come to our association and do a talk about the I-90, and I would appreciate if we could wait until that meeting is done. I looked at it, and it might be, I think the February 17th meeting would be your second Tuesday, or second Monday, excuse me, in February for your meeting. So, maybe if we could get a meeting set up before then, to have the I-90 group filled in on what's going to happen, I think that would be very beneficial to our group. Some other things that really concern us as a signage, the state of Wisconsin does have, it's a DURS, WHBS, it's the Wisconsin Highway Business Signs. Those are the blue billboard signs where they have the certain businesses that pay to be on there. I don't know if they allow enough to benefit all the businesses there after these roads are changed, because it's going to be a lot different. It's not going to be an easy on, easy off exit anymore after this is done. I'm sure everybody will get used to it, but one thing about, this is kind of, I don't consider this a local issue. I kind of figure, figure it as being like an interstate issue, because you're going to have lots of people that come through there once or twice a year, and if they have a hard time getting off, they seem to remember better, once or twice a year, that they had a hard time, and they're not going to get off next time they come down that way. So, that's one thing that concerns me, too. I understand the local people get used to it, but we really depend on a lot of people coming from out of states at our business out there. You know, and a lot of people think that it sounds like, from the way that this is leaning, that we're more worried about the Gateway Boulevard than we are about the Milwaukee Road corridor. And as Tom said, you know, there's a lot of tax dollars that come out of there, and I hate to see us lose a lot of our business of all the people out there. There's lots of different businesses that are striving, or that are doing well now, and that are coming in the near future here. So, we definitely want to make sure that we can get people into our businesses or on that corridor as quick as possible. The roundabouts are something that concerns us, because we know people don't really care for roundabouts. I think the driver doesn't mind them. I think the passenger and the passenger you see kind of doesn't like them as much, because they don't know what the driver's doing. But I know that's the thing that's coming, and, you know, you're going to have to get out of the way. But I think roundabouts in that area with all the wide loads and long loads that come through that area, that could be a problem area for having roundabouts on. So, I think that's something we may want to look into. I know that the state, or the feds haven't chosen if they're going to do roundabouts or signals at that interchange yet, but it's something that we do need to think about, and make sure that we're heard, that we don't want to have roundabouts out there, if possible. That's what we'd like to do. Another thing I noticed, or I witnessed myself, I went to Janesville a couple weeks ago. I got off on the, or I was going to get off on the Racine Street exit there, and I don't know if anybody's been there since they've redone that, but that is quite a little, I'll say, mess up there. I think it is. Unless you're going over through that every day, it's kind of a hard little intersection to get through. So, I mean, it just brings me to, you know, want our interchange, our intersection, easy to get around in. You know, you want to be able to have people get from one side of the street to the other real easy, so, you know, people don't mind getting off there. We just want to make sure people want to come back to that, that interchange, that intersection there. So, I realize it's a busy intersection, and it's, you know, it's very important to the whole city of Beloit, but I'd sure like to see it, you know, made, made right, and, because I know it's going to be there for 40 years or more. So, I guess my, my question is, you know, I don't know if this can happen or not. Maybe if we could lay this over till the second February meeting, and we could have some city staff come out, and that's the plan right now, to come to our next I-90 business group meeting, and have them explain it to them better than I can, and tell them the reasons why we're going to, or why we want to do, or why you want to do what you want to do, I should say. So, then they can understand it.
Thank you. Do we have any other persons wishing to come forward and speak under citizens' participation? Second call for persons to come forward and speak under citizens' participation? Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak under citizens' participation? Hearing done, I'll close citizens' participation and move on to item six, the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda. Counselor DeForest, you wanted to remove one?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to request that we remove item 6C, please.
Does anyone else want any other items removed from the consent agenda? Hearing done, the consent agenda will consist of items 6A, 6B, and 6D. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Moved by Lubkey, second by Vanda Bogart. All in favor of the consent, approving the consent agenda, state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item, consent agenda passes by a vote of six to zero. Item 6C.
A resolution approving the appointment of a corporation agent for HRNSV Entertainment LLC, doing business as Addiction, located at 1310 Cranston Road of Edgardo Garrido, the ABLCC recommended for, recommended approval, five to zero. The Addiction has applied to appoint a new agent for the property located at 1310 Cranston Road. The ABLCC reviewed this at their meeting on January 14th. The city attorney asked several questions of Mr. Garrido, and, including questions about if Mr. Garrido was aware of the issues that Addiction has had in the past that resulted in the loss of their license. And the agent responded that he did understand, and that he understands the correct way to purchase beer and liquor. The city attorney also asked questions about when the, when the business would be open, and they said on Fridays and/or Saturdays from 9:00 PM to 2:00 AM. And Mr. Garrido stated that he would be there for those events, and he also said that he has been given control of the business from the owners. And Captain Russey of the Police Department stated that he checked the municipal and state criminal records, and that the character record and reputation of the agent were satisfactory to the Police Department.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Move approval?
Moved by Sprite, sir.
Move second.
Second by Lubkey. Do we have any questions or comments? Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. Forgive my ignorance, I just want to make sure I understand this. So, currently, there, they do not have a liquor license, and...
They currently have a license, but it was suspended by the city council, and it has not been reissued, because they do not have an agent. And they're a corporation, so we cannot issue a license to a corporation that does not have an agent.
Okay. So, then with this, if we were to approve this tonight, the change of agent, then they would be able to serve alcohol at this point in time?
Correct. If the agent is approved tonight, they could get their liquor license tomorrow.
Okay. And then, I saw the minutes from the ABLCC meeting as well. Was our council representative there? Dave, were you there?
Kevin Levy is the council representative, and he wasn't at the meeting.
And was Attorney Casper there, or Attorney Krieger?
Attorney Krieger was there.
Oh. All right, I guess I cannot ask my question, then.
I mean, I was at the meeting, if, if I can be of any additional help. I also believe that the agent is, is here in the audience.
Okay. Can I, Mr. President, can I ask the agent question?
If they wish, if they wish to approach the podium.
Good evening.
State your name and address.
Hello. Yeah, my name is Edgardo Garrido, 401 West Milwaukee Street, Janesville. That's from where I, where I come.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I do have a question for you. I saw in the minutes that you were asked if you understand the violation that occurred before, that there was improper procedures used to purchase liquor for the establishment. And you said that you understood that, and you understood what rules were violated and what process you have to use in the future. Could you please share with me what you know about what those, what those requirements are, in terms of changing that behavior from the violation that occurred before? Because right now, the minutes just say that you were asked, do you know what the procedures are, and you said yes. But I want to hear from you, can you articulate what the procedure is for the correct purchase of liquor?
Well, actually, now, one thing we want to, we have just license for beer, not alcohol.
Okay.
And we was here last, last time to take opportunity to keep working, and we want to do everything how, how it's supposed to be, how...
Could you speak specifically to what rule was violated before, and how you will make sure that's not violated again?
Well, because we have more help now with, we work together with everybody, and I don't know how can I explain that.
Okay. Do you know the rule, the violation that resulted in the suspension of the license?
Yeah, yeah.
Could you, could you describe that to me?
I know how we need to buy, buy, we need to supply that.
Great. Could you, could you tell me about that, please?
I don't know how can I explain that.
Are you having trouble finding language words to say it, or do you not know how to explain the process?
I don't know how can I explain in English that.
Okay.
Okay.
Is there someone that you brought with you who could...
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
No, it's all right. I just want to make sure you understand.
Yeah. Oh, actually, by, we have a, how do you say, distributors?
Distributors, yeah.
Yeah.
Could you tell me more about that?
So, he's probably saying that he's going to be in touch with the distributors as the amount of liquor, like beer they need, in order to be, like, stable, like, to, in order, like, to know how much beer they need, like, as in an event. Like, they're going to be ordering, if they need this much amount of beer, they're going to order it by the distributor they have.
Okay. And then, do you understand that even if, let's say, you plan for a certain amount of beer, and you have run out, that you, you cannot run to the local grocery store?
No, no, actually, we have a storage there. We have a
Okay.
...storage, and always we have a little extra all the time. But that's, that's, that's the plan, how...
Oh, no, no, for sure not. That's, that's how it was the problem before, so we don't...
Okay.
So, we, we make sure, if we don't have it, we don't have it.
Okay.
We want to make sure, don't do the same.
That's what I want to make sure you understand.
Yeah, the same problem how it was before, no.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for translating.
All right. Counselor Lubkey, you had something to add?
Edgardo, I have a question for you. You work at a restaurant in Janesville?
Yes.
Are you manager, or do you own the restaurant?
I'm the owner.
Okay, so, that answers the question. You have liquor, you have beer there?
Yeah.
Okay, so, he must know the procedure. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Sprite, sir.
A couple more questions, if you don't mind. How long have you owned the restaurant in Janesville?
We have one year already owner, but we was employer before, for a long, long time.
And do you understand how long you need to keep receipts showing where you bought alcohol, and can you tell us how long that is?
Actually, we do every, we try to do every month. That's, that's how we, how I run right now, but if we need to do every twice, twice a month, we do it.
Do you know how long you need to keep those records, in case somebody needs to look at them? How long you need to keep them on file?
We, we keep it long as we need it. If we need to keep for two years, three years, longs we need to keep it, we can keep everything. We can make a nice... Thank you.
Counselor Vanda Bogart.
A couple more questions, sir. Sorry to put you on the hot seat here, but you're, you're aware that there have been in the past problems with this location in terms of noise, in terms of crowd control, in, in addition to the alcohol receipts issue. Are you in a position to tell us that you're going to be able to stay ahead of those problems, and, and not let this become a problem area again?
No, actually, what, one thing what we do, we have more cameras, we have more security. We have, we try to make it better this time.
Well, because as I recall, from time to time, especially in the summer, on those weekends when you were, the place was open, the police were there almost constantly, trying to do crowd control in their parking lot. And I want to make sure that you're aware that you need to keep ahead of this, and, and keep it under control.
Yeah.
Apparently, you are. Good.
That's what we, we want to do better this time.
I don't mind people making money, but we don't want a mess.
Yes.
Have it that way. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Sprite, sir.
Question for the city clerk. Can you clarify whether this... Can you clarify whether this license just covers beer or also covers liquor?
This is a beer and liquor license. So if they choose only to sell beer, I mean, that's their prerogative, but they do have a full license to sell beer and liquor. They have an approved full license. They don't physically have the license right now, as I spoke to before. But if we return the license, it would be for beer and liquor. And the city council with, right now is not in the position to change that with this application.
Then if I could ask a follow-up for Mr. Garrido. I believe a minute ago you said that you understood that you only had a beer license. Are you, can you tell us, are you saying that you only plan to serve beer and are you aware that you also have a license for liquor? And are you planning to serve liquor as well?
Actually, now, we have only, the plan is to sell just beer. And we see in the future, if we are able to sell, we apply for liquor, we want to apply. But in this moment, just want to stay how, the plan, how we want to do, just try to make better control now. And that's how we want to do it, just for now, just beer.
But are you aware that you have the legal right to sell liquor right now? Or are you planning to give up that license? Or are you aware that you have that license?
I noticed that he's confusing the fact that you asked him, because you asked him before about him having his restaurant, and he has the beer for the, for just beer. But he's confusing that. He's confused that they're going to sell liquor and beer in the salon. He's confused that they're going to sell beer in the restaurant. He's confused that they're going to sell beer in the salon.
Okay, then, so he says.
He's going to sell both things. Yeah, because he was confused, I noticed that he was confused. Because you asked him if he was going to be, what he, what his license was for his restaurant, and he said beer. So then you came with another question about the club. That's why he got confused. I just want to make that clear.
Thank you.
He got confused.
Thank you.
But yeah, there will be beer and liquor. We are aware that we have the license for both.
And, but you're only planning to serve beer right now?
No, like we were planning, like, as what the customer wants. Because obviously, we have the license for both. So if the customer was like, wants liquor, then we obviously going to serve them liquor, you know?
Thank you.
All right. I think we'll need to, make sure you get all your questions on this one, okay? Sheila, Counselor DeForest.
Are you getting tired, Mr. President?
Just a smidge.
I do have a question related to this, and I asked about this in a previous proceeding. Ms. Hausman-Lemire, do we have the manual that we distribute to liquor license applicants, alcohol license applicants in Spanish? I'd asked about making sure we had that at City Hall. Is that available now here?
It's not available at all. I mean, unless the State Department of Revenue gets it translated. We get all of our forms and manuals from the Department of Revenue. That's, you know, liquor licenses are of local control, but all of the forms, all of the manuals, all of the information that we provide to applicants is all from the Department of Revenue.
So is it possible that the city could choose to translate the manual or we would not have the authority to do that?
I could look into that. I mean, I don't know what kind of translation services we have right now. The manual is large.
Yes, I imagine.
So it would be, I mean, if the council so directs us, I think we could probably look into that.
Because I would rather have the preventative on the front end, making sure that applicants understand the rules. That's, I think that behooves us as a city, actually protects us. And I would just ask the applicant, please make sure that you go over that manual with someone who can translate it for you to make sure you understand clearly what your rules and obligations are as an agent. It's very important because a liquor license is a privilege. So I'm just asking you, please, to sit down with someone who can review that with you and explain it to you in a way that you can understand.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, then. I'll make one last call for questions or comments. I won't give you the evil eye too badly if you choose to ask one. All right. Hearing none, we'll call the matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Item passes by a vote of five to one. All right, item seven.
Thank you.
Seven A.
A resolution approving a Class A beer and Class A liquor license for Old Town Market, Inc., doing business as the Old Town Market, located at nine oh five Henry Avenue. A beer king agent. The ABLCC recommended denial, five to zero.
All right.
So the ABLCC did consider a Class B beer and Class A, or excuse me, Class A beer and Class A liquor license for Old Town Market at their meeting on January fourteenth. Rory Owens, chairperson for the Merrill Revitalization Group, stated that his group met with the owner regarding his plans for this convenience store and said that there, his group does not support a store selling beer and liquor because of the negative side effects on the Merrill Neighborhood. The chairperson of the ABLCC made a motion to deny the license. That motion did carry five to zero.
Thank you. And this is worded in the affirmative, so a vote to approve, a yea vote would be to approve it. Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Moved by Sprite, sir. Second by Loopkey. Questions and comments? Counselor DeForest.
I am appreciative of the neighborhood expressing their desire to not approve the liquor license on in this location, and I would ask my colleagues to honor their request. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Item is rejected by a vote of zero to five.
Six.
First zero to six, excuse me. Thank you for keeping modest. All right, ordinances, item eight, there are none. Item nine are appointments. We do have appointments. I, the undersigned Charles M. Haynes, duly elected president of the Beloit City Council, subject to the confirmation by the Beloit City Council, does hereby appoint the following citizen members to vacancies in terms indicated below. Set appointments being pursuant to nominations made by and approved by the Appointment Review Committee at the regular meeting held on January thirteenth, twenty fourteen. The appointments are, for the Board of Ethics, Teresa Tan at thirteen thirty-six Ninth Street, replacing Mary Beaster for a term ending December thirty-first, twenty fifteen. For the Business Improvement District, the DBA, we have Melinda Obershoff of the Beloit Daily News at one forty-nine State Street, replacing Peter Gabriel as owner occupant for a term expiring December thirty-first, twenty sixteen. Incumbent Elaine Ribaric, owner occupant for a term expiring thirty-one December twenty sixteen. Incumbent Mary Witter, resident at large for a term expiring thirty-one December twenty sixteen. And incumbent Romero Vargas, owner occupant for a term expiring December thirty-first, twenty sixteen. Do I have a motion to approve the appointments? Motion to approve. Moved by Loopkey.
Second.
Second by Vanda Bogart. Do we have any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item passes six, zero. We do also have following vacancies that I'll go ahead and announce. Appointment Review Committee has two vacancies for residents. Board of Appeals has two vacancy alternate for residents. Board of Ethics has one vacancy for former city councilor, three vacancy for residents. Board of Review has two vacancy alternate for residents. Community Development Authority has two vacancies for residents. Equal Opportunity Commission has one vacancy for resident. Municipal Golf Committee has one vacancy for youth and one vacancy for resident. Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission has one vacancy for resident. Plan Commission has one vacancy for resident and Traffic Review Committee has one vacancy for resident. Would seem that only the Landmarks Commission is full at this moment. And I would recommend to all citizens to find a commission to get on to, participate in your government. It's one of the most important things you can do. If we can convince you to do that, then please contact the city clerk or the city manager's office. So we'll move on to item ten, council upcoming events and activities and upcoming events. And we will start with Counselor DeForest.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was able to enjoy three different events commemorating Martin Luther King Jr.'s life. And I appreciated the citywide concert at New Zion Baptist Church on Sunday. And then Monday, the breakfast that was held by the Greater Beloit Ministers Fellowship. And then finally, the Beloit College Convocation later that evening. And would just like to thank Reverend Dr. Brenda Atlas for her wonderful comments, both during the breakfast and during convocation. She issued a challenge to us to be actively involved in social justice issues. We still have work to do. We should not rest on the laurels of the work that's already been done and would encourage us to continue to be mindful that there are still issues of equity and injustice that need to be addressed. Thank you.
Counselor Vanda Bogart.
Nothing except urge people to get out and plan to attend the Beloit International Film Festival coming up near the end of February and maybe even volunteer.
Counselor Kincaid.
I have nothing to report.
Counselor Loopkey.
Yes, I was honored to serve with the councilman Sheila DeForest Davis and Kevin Levy, the Black Hawk Tech Martin Luther King celebration about ten days ago. That's one you forgot, Sheila. I mentioned there were four of them. We represented the city and that was very nice. That's all I have.
Counselor Sprite, sir.
I also enjoyed attending events commemorating Martin Luther King Jr. Day, both the prayer breakfast sponsored by the Beloit Community Ministers Fellowship and the convocation at Eaton Chapel. I definitely appreciated Dr. Atlas's talk, but also wanted to mention the two students who spoke at the Beloit College Convocation. I think Dr. Atlas has some competition on her hands because they were, they were some pretty powerful speakers as well, Namunga Mantina in Calago Hips. And they really talked about the importance of continuing the work of civil rights, both in this country and in other countries. Namunga Mantina talked about coming from Africa and the influence of Dr. King there. And so both students are great speakers, and I have no doubt that someday they'll be coming back as alumni like Dr. Atlas to give talks like that as well. I also want to encourage everybody to attend Winterfest next weekend. There'll be great events all across the community and you can find the full schedule online.
Thank you. And I have nothing to add this evening. Item eleven would be city manager's presentation. There is none, so we'll move on to item twelve A.
A resolution approving the settlement of the St. Croix Bad River Ban versus City of Beloit litigation case number two thousand thirteen dash CV dash four ninety-eight.
Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. As all of you on the council know, the city has been involved in litigation with the St. Croix and Bad River Chipewa bans for some time now. The local circuit court, Judge McCrory, had a hearing last October at which she considered motions made by the city and the Ho-Chunk. The essence of the lawsuit by the Chipewa against the city was a claim that the prior option that the city had entered with them was freestanding in nature, could be exercised regardless of the status of the intergovernmental agreement that was also entered between the city and the tribes. At the motion hearing, the judge rejected that argument, found that the option agreement and the IGA were integral with one another. And the significance of that is, is that the IGA required that the option land, which we often refer to as parcel ten, be used solely to have ancillary development in support of the gaming operations that would occur on the adjoining trust parcel. And that that gaming was to be operated by the Chipewa tribes. Well, by October of last year, that was an impossibility, given the fact that the land, the trust site, had been purchased by the Ho-Chunk. And furthermore, the Chipewa fee to trust application had been rejected with, had been disapproved, with no follow-up to either amend nor refile that. So it was a very significant hearing in October. Shortly after that hearing, we were approached by the Chipewa to see if we could resolve our differences. And those talks have been extensive and have taken a long time, but they seem to have reached a successful conclusion contingent upon all of the governing bodies, the city's council, the tribal legislatures for the Bad River and St. Croix group, and also the Ho-Chunk legislature approving the agreement. The agreement in front of you tonight is on, or was on, an agenda item for the Ho-Chunk legislative meeting, which convened this morning around ten o'clock. The attorney for the Ho-Chunk promised to email me as soon as they addressed this agenda item. He did caution me that they had a lengthy agenda and would likely go well into the evening. I've not received that email. He also told me he anticipated no issues with it. So we're anticipating that, we anticipated Ho-Chunk might be the first act, but in fact, you folks may be the first to act on it. It's also on both of the legislative bodies up north in St. Turtle Lake for St. Croix and Bad River also for tomorrow. But again, the, I'd like to briefly go take you through the agreement and then answer any questions you might have. The agreement does call upon the city to pay the two Chipewa tribes combined, a single payment of fifty thousand dollars that represents mainly money that was paid to us over the term of the option. About forty-six thousand dollars was paid into the city, so the bulk of that money would constitute a refund of their option payments. It contains something we attorneys call a dismissal with prejudice. The with prejudice is kind of a magic term we use to mean this lawsuit may never be brought again. It's done. It's dismissed with prejudice, meaning it's final. It contains a mutual release of claims by the city, by the both tribes against one another. If there were other claims that weren't a part of the suit, they're released. More importantly, I think, and critical to the agreement and what led to the time involved in getting to this point is a couple of lengthy clauses dealing with non-interference and public statements. It commits both of the tribal entities, the St. Croix Chipewa and the Bad River Chipewa, to do nothing, to oppose, impede, obstruct, delay, challenge, it's got a whole bunch of words. They can't do anything to tie up this project for a specified period of time. And it's basically fifteen years or possibly earlier, but if it was earlier, it would have to be six years after the Secretary of Interior gives approval to the current fee to trust application on behalf of the Ho-Chunk. The governor has indicated his concurrence with that approval and the Secretary of Interior has accepted the trust parcel into trust. All three of those things have to occur, and then a six-year period of time has to occur after that. Six years was used because that is the period of time under the federal, what they call Administrative Procedures Act, for any party to appeal a decision of the Secretary of Interior taking land into trust. We think that that is more than adequate time to reach a final decision and protect against appeals on that decision. And the tribes have committed here not to interfere, nor appeal, nor file new lawsuits on the fee to trust matter or any other element that could be a pressure point such as the environmental impact statement process and other administrative and gubernatorial steps. The tribes also can't make any public statements in the way of official opposition, press releases, interviews, tribal resolutions, and the like. I think it's fair to point out that this agreement only binds tribal entities that were party to the suit. Possible weakness is that it does not control individual tribal members. However, it does have a clause in here. However, it does have a clause in here that the tribes may not support, approve, or endorse any effort by individuals, but we can't control via this document, I guess what you might term the individual free speech rights of individuals, but it certainly bars the tribes as tribal entities from taking any action, and that is a huge benefit. And I can tell you from discussions with council for Ho-Chunk, it's greatly appreciated by the Ho-Chunk that we insisted upon that as an element. If there were to be a violation by the Ho-Chunk, or, excuse me, the Chipewa, the agreement contains a remedy. They, number one, have to refund the $50,000 that we would have paid them. They are then on the hook for our attorney's fees in this action, and the circuit court retains jurisdiction over the agreement, so we wouldn't get shuttled off into a box of dealing with sovereign immunity and things like that. The circuit court here in Rock County will maintain jurisdiction over this agreement for its life. So I think all in all, I am personally very pleased with the agreement. I think we came a long way in the negotiations, and I would recommend approval in an unqualified fashion, but I certainly am prepared to answer questions.
Do you have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Moved by Lukey, seconded by Vanda Bogart. Councilor DeForest.
Thank you. I do have one question, Mr. Casper. Has the Ho-Chunk Nation agreed to assist us with any of the legal fees that we have incurred?
That is still an open item. We have a number of future dealings coming up with the Ho-Chunk, including the development agreement called for in the IGA, and that is going to be one of the items we will be discussing.
Will that be discussed by this joint body that we've been talking about, or just between the leaders of both the City of Beloit and the Ho-Chunk Nation?
The joint.
The joint governing body, the advisory body?
No.
Until later.
That won't be formed until the casino's approved.
Okay.
Casper, land use decisions, that'll come later.
All right. All right, well, I guess I'd just like to make my statement. I hope that that is assertively addressed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Vanda Bogart.
Excuse me, thank you. Mr. Casper, a couple of questions. First, I would commend your point 3.2 sub D, the, in fact, that the tribes would not support approval, endorsement, or disparagement on the part of tribal members. You hit upon the point, this agreement is between the tribal governments and the City of Beloit. It doesn't necessarily affect the individuals, and I, one of my concerns or fears was a string of individuals coming forward from the Chipewa side, talking about how they have been aggrieved and blah, blah, blah. And so at least if they do, the tribes, tribal governments themselves can't support that or can't endorse that.
Yes, it would constitute a violation of the agreement if they were to do so. Candidly, I think the dangers to a smooth processing of this agreement would more likely come about should a, some formal tribal action be interjected in opposition at, out at the interior, at the gubernatorial process, and that can't occur, or it would be a violation.
And another question, this has been reviewed by not only yourself, but who else?
I'd be hard pressed to count up all the attorneys that have had a look at this. Our outside counsel from Washington DC, Dennis Whitlessley, along with at least two or three attorneys in his firm in Washington DC and in Michigan, have reviewed this. At the Ho-Chunk level, it's been reviewed by a council for the tribal legislature, it's been reviewed by two outside counsel out of Madison that were extremely helpful in this effort. It's been reviewed by outside counsel for St. Croix, in-house counsel for St. Croix, outside counsel for Bad River, and inside counsel for Bad River. I think at one time I'd added up about a dozen attorneys or more that have had a hand in this.
Thank you.
Councilor Lukey.
I just want to reiterate to the public something that Mr. Casper said that's very important, and that is, of the $50,000 payment we're making, the Chipewa already gave us $46,000. So for $4,000, we're getting a guarantee that they will not oppose the casino in Beloit when it comes to Governor Walker, or whoever the governor is at that time, comes to his or her desk. So thank you, Mr. Casper.
Okay. Do we have any other questions or comments? Bearing that, I'll call the matter all in favor of approval, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Item passes 6-0. Item 12B.
A resolution supporting alternates 2A or 2B for the reconstruction of the I-3990 and I-43 with 81 interchange as presented by the Department of Transportation.
Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is indeed a pleasure this evening to be able to present to council and the community a resolution which would affirm the city's report for option 2 relative to the redesign of the Interstate 43, Interstate 3990 interchange located here in the City of Beloit. Now, the resolution this evening is a culmination of almost two years of planning. The consulting firm that's been hired by the state for this project has about a dozen engineers working on all aspects of the interchange. We've been in meetings that are virtually monthly meetings with representatives from the Wisconsin Department of Transportation, the consulting firm, various bureaus within the department, also with representatives from the Federal Highway Administration, working through a number of different design options and alternatives. Very on, very early on in the redesign of the interchange, one of the requests that the city made and initiated was to extend Milwaukee Road to the east and to tie Milwaukee Road to the current Gateway Boulevard. This request was made because we want this new infrastructure to work for the City of Beloit. We don't want it just to be a series of high-speed ramps that takes traffic through the city at the fastest possible speed. We want this linkage to tie the east and west sides of the highway. It is mutually beneficial. In fact, this option is far more beneficial than option 1 in bringing traffic from the Gateway Boulevard directly back in to the existing Milwaukee Road corridor. We had a very interesting meeting just last week with executives from Cary Americas. They were very, very excited about the prospect of being able to get the hundreds of employees, job candidates, VIPs, people coming to this research facility from all over the Americas for everything from product rollout to participating in the research, to be able to get all those people directly west of the highway without having to drive three or four miles out of their way. They use the hotels there, they use the restaurants there, and they were very excited about having that linkage. The assertion was made earlier that the city is sabotaging the Milwaukee Road commercial corridor in favor of development in the gateway is ludicrous. It's absolutely ridiculous. No one, certainly myself and the other officials that have been working on this, are as concerned about business development in all of these areas, and as you see, that we've got a number of projects under construction on Milwaukee Road as we speak. Having the local linkage and the local tie is extremely important. This will generate more traffic, not less, to the Milwaukee Road commercial, the highway commercial corridor located on the west side of the interstate highway. Number two, a couple of other points. I know there were a lot of fears expressed tonight by Mr. Finley, and Tom, I don't remember you being very active in this process. I was a little surprised you showed up tonight with such a definitive description of what you believe this interchange should look like, when in fact, you haven't participated to any extent that I'm aware of in the process. But we've been at this for two years, and we've worked through, and we've solved a lot of these problems. Number one, you expressed a fear that traffic getting off the interstate would all get off at Hart Road, and that would destroy the commercial businesses on Milwaukee Road. That is absolutely false. Number one, 80-plus percent of all the traffic exiting and entering Milwaukee Road from the interstate system comes off 3990. There will be a brand-new diamond interchange located in close proximity to the current Cloverleaf, which will actually work much better and move traffic much easier coming on and off the interstate to access that commercial corridor. Number two, whether you pick option 1 or whether you pick option 2, all of the ramps from all directions on the interstate are moving back a considerable distance further away from what is now the Cloverleaf interchange. Coming southbound on 3990, drivers will be making the decision to access that ramp right after they pass under the Hart Road overpass. Same thing on the south side, and same thing coming southbound from 43. You'll be getting off of the interstate even under option 1 as soon as you pass what's now the Hart Road ramps. In fact, they've looked at an option, if we go with option 1, of eliminating those ramps on the west side of the Hart Road interchange, because they may interfere with the ramps getting off to access 3990 and Milwaukee Road. So even if you go with option 1 and lose the linkage and the local connection with Milwaukee Road, you're still not going to have a ramp getting off of Interstate 43 near the interchange. The ramp is going to get off back by Hart Road. The other thing we've been looking at is cost and benefit, and they've done a lot of analysis on that. This particular scenario, while it does require some traffic to exit at 43, is also very cost-effective, and they've actually been looking at option 2A, which keeps 3990 very close to the existing right-of-way, and that will save some costs, and it also pulls in the right-of-way a bit to minimize impact on adjacent properties. And of course, it does keep the basic interstate interchange as close as we can to the west Milwaukee Road commercial corridor. There are also some concerns expressed about traffic circles. We don't make that decision. The DOT doesn't make that decision. That's made by the Federal Highway Administration. We've already delivered several strong and passionate pleas to put signalized intersections at this interchange. I'm talking about 3990, the diamond interchange, because of the amount of truck traffic that uses that exit point. And we've pointed out that the circles, traffic circles, are much smaller than these Cloverleaf circles, which we're trying to get rid of because they slow traffic down. So we're going to continue working on that. The signage issue is really not a problem. I explained earlier to Mr. Lawver that the blue service signs that he referred to earlier will all be included in the project. They're already spotted on the plans. That's a federal specification as to the distances and clearances, and there will be enough of those to accommodate the signs for every vendor or business that wants to add one to that. Probably the bigger issue is the signage at 43 and Hart Road. We do want to make sure that the exit signs, as you approach there, make it very clear that that's the last local exit before you hit the 3990 interchange. We also want to make it clear that that route goes to Wisconsin 81, goes to Milwaukee Road, and it goes to Gateway Boulevard. So that we have enough direction, enough information there for drivers that are coming in. The other point that I didn't make earlier about access for the local businesses is, in addition to the fact that 80-plus percent of that traffic comes from 3990, much of the traffic coming southbound on Interstate 43 terminates in Beloit. It's either coming to the Beloit area, or it's going to points west of Beloit. The interstate ends here, so if they're going anywhere west, they have to exit here and move to the west on Highway 81. So that traffic will continue to exit here. It's going to drive right down Milwaukee Road unless it cuts down Gateway, regardless of what, where the exit point is located. As I explained earlier, we are committed to work with the I-90 Business Corridor. I've already committed to go to their meeting. This process is ongoing. While we've got two years under our belt, we've got another probably six-plus months before this is finalized, and there will be a series of meetings with all of the impacted property owners out there as the process continues. But it is important at this point for council to take a position, supporting the alternate 2, so we can get the DOT and the Federal Highway Administration focused on planning for that option, and that's why they've requested that council consider a resolution. So I think if you have questions, I'll be more than happy to answer those. I'm sure a lot of local property owners are going to have fear and trepidation. This is something new, and anytime something changes, something's new, people are always frightened by what the outcome is going to be. I'm very comfortable that we've done enough planning, and we've done enough engineering, and we've done enough study of this configuration to know that it will work, and it will be considerably better for all of the business owners on both sides of the interstate to have that direct arterial linkage. And again, this is one of the ways that we can make this project work for Beloit and not just be a component of a, through-traffic system, but actually have some improvements to our local circulation network as well. So if you have any further questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
Do you have a motion to approve?
It's a move, Mr. President.
Second. Moved by Vanda Bogart, seconded by Lukey. Councilor Vanda Bogart.
I just wanted to make the comment, I think Mr. Arf hit upon it a little bit, but this is an opportunity for building infrastructure for the next 50 years, and for us to focus on the fears and concerns is certainly valid, but it's, it's looking at the current situation and saying, this is the way it's always going to be. To me, the biggest thing here is that we get through and under or over the interstate, the north-south interstate, and get into the west, or, excuse me, the east side of what will be our community as we grow forward, and that is vital to me. I think we've been hampered by the 3990 as being the edge up until the Gateway Project, and this is an opportunity to break out of that. And so I have no problems at all supporting the idea of extending the Milwaukee Road through this interchange. I think it's a critical thing. A further comment I had from some criticizing the chaos that's going to occur as this project goes forward and is built, there's no question it's going to be tremendous disruption. And my answer is similar to the one I gave when we redid the Henry Avenue Bridge. I said, yes, it's horrible, yes, it's terrible, yes, it's inconvenient, and I think another 50 years from now, somebody else is going to have to go through this. That bridge lasted from 1955 through now, and we had to go through the disruption while it was rebuilt. Well, this interchange project is going to be very disruptive, but we're only going to have to go through it now, and in 50 years, somebody has to go through it again. It's simply the price we have to pay. So I think this is a tremendous project, and I think that the access to the eastern side of the north-south interstate is the critical facet of it. Thank you.
I'll put my own two cents worth in at this moment. I think that, that one of the things that I, having spoken with the traffic engineers and spoken with the DOT myself at several of the meetings, the casual traffic that would get off, that might get off at 43 that wouldn't otherwise come up is such as, is maybe 10% of 20%. So you're figuring three or four out of 100. To set us, to set back the entire city completely back on its heels for 50 years over what a handful of traffic counts that you, that might have casually gotten off in the city, I think is a boggling concept. And as far as timing is concerned, the DOT has told us how, that, you know, that they would like us to make this decision very rapidly. They've said repeatedly that, you know, they really want to, want to hear from us, you know, within the next few weeks.
If I may, Mr. President, this went to public comment with four options, which included the alignment to about a year and a half ago, and all of you will remember, we thought they were going to be back with revisions by December of '12. Okay? And the designers backed up and said, look, we don't want to do any more meetings until we get most of these design concepts worked out and give Federal Highway Administration concurrence before we bring them out. And it was December of '13, okay, before that meeting was actually held. That's how much work and effort has gone in to evaluating these options, and as Councilor Vanda Bogart indicated, this is a mega decision. A few, you know, the few cars coming south on 43 that don't know that they need to get off at Beloit to go west, and may go into and into the interchange, will be dwarfed by the new traffic created by the Gateway Business Park, including Cary Americas, that will now have direct access to all of these businesses on the west. will now have direct access to all of these businesses on the west side of the interstate highway. The advantage to option 2 for those businesses is gargantuan, and as the Gateway Business Area continues to develop, there'll be more employees, more VIP guests, more salespeople, more new employees, more employees coming for orientation at all of those businesses in Gateway that will now have direct access to the hotels, the stores, the gas stations on the west side of the interstate. And we envision that that's going to remain, the primary highway service area will remain on the west side because most of that traffic comes off 3990. It doesn't come from 43. Now, there is, there's a plan underway now, looking at a, another possible hotel that could be over closer to Cary. And part of the reason that hotel is being looked at and being advocated by some of the people out in the Gateway areas because they do not have linkage right now to get to the hotels, the gas stations and the businesses that are located on the west side of the interstate.
Thank you. Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. I heard that the DOT would like to hear from us within the next few weeks, and I'm wondering if there's some way that the city manager's meeting with I-90 Business Association could be moved up and we could lay this item over until our next meeting in two weeks. I, I just will express my concern. I am glad that we met with Cary, but I think it's important that we also meet with our small local businesses that are affected, and I would hope that we could take the time to do that before we vote on this. So I'd like to make a motion to lay this over until our next meeting.
Do we have a second? Hearing none, the matter dies for lack of second. Counselor DeForest, did you have something additional?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to make another motion. I am concerned that included in the resolution is formal language that expresses our strong commitment to signage, proper signage that will help our businesses thrive with this development. I have prepared a whereas paragraph that I'd like to see included in the resolution. The paragraph reads, "Whereas the City of Beloit has been and remains committed to the continued vitality of businesses along the Milwaukee Road corridor as well as the Gateway Business Area, the city will continue communication with businesses in both areas and will forward recommendations regarding signage and other issues of interest to local businesses to the state and federal agencies during the design process and during construction." So I'd like to obtain a second for that motion to include that paragraph that is just articulating the city's commitment to make sure that we're passing on to the state and federal agencies responsible for the construction, the business, look, our local businesses' concerns about signage.
Second.
Okay. Moved, or seconded by Spritzer. Any questions or comments on that amendment?
Mr. President, could I just say that we also support that amendment? And I worked with Counselor DeForest today on finalizing the language, so we would ask council to insert that whereas provision into the resolution to provide assurances to the business corridor that we will work with them on the signage issues as, and all other aspects of the design as this continues. It's not just signage, there's a lot of details yet to be worked out, and we will be meeting with the I-90 Business Corridor on a regular basis throughout this design process to make sure that they're aware of all of these details. And the construction, that's later, much later now, because this project's been moved back probably two years because of the time that's gone into this planning process, but that will be, there'll be a lot of inconvenience. We also anticipate regular monthly meetings with all the businesses impacted out there on both sides of the interstate during that entire construction process, which will be about two years.
All right. Any other questions or comments on the amendment? Hearing none, all in favor of amending the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes 6-0.
I'll point out, I will go ahead and support the city manager and state that, that the biggest detriment to these businesses is going to come simply from the chaos of the construction. And I think there are so many details to be worked out here that I know we have to be committed to that and we will be. So do we have any other questions or comments on the resolution as amended?
All right then, I'll call the matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes 6-0.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay. Item 13, moved by Vanda Bogart, seconded by Lubke. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.